Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Due to the governor statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting by video conference. The same conditions require barring access to the public. For in-person attendance, in light of those limitations, the public's invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda to comply with the Opens Meetings Act requirements, virtual meetings. Tonight's meeting is being recorded, and if I could ask village clerk Schmidtky to take a roll call and make sure everyone can be heard.
Trustee Baraski, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Hello.
Thank you. Trustee Micho, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee O'Connor, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Trustee O'Reilly, can you hear me?
You're muted, Bobby.
Yes.
Thank you. And trustee Tanucci, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
All right, all president accounted for. If I could ask everyone to say a pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. All right, welcome, everyone. The first item on the agenda are the homeowners association visitors. I don't know if anyone is here from Bridlewood. I don't think so. Because all I see is Amy and Ken. Also from the Indian Creek Club, my subdivision. I don't see Rich Tourette or Debbie Fuse here either, so we'll just move right along. The next item is public comment. I'm gathering that there's no public comment tonight, or is there any?
Great job Friday. That was awesome.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks, Amy. All right, then let's keep moving. The next item on the agenda is the village engineers report. Jeff, you want to take it away?
All right, absolutely. Thank you. So for the engineers report for this week, I'll just start out by saying a lot of the construction projects throughout the village are either done or nearing completion. Last week, I noted that both New Earth Kruger and South Kruger Road are substantially complete. North Kruger, the trees will be evaluated and likely replaced in the spring. The other two projects that have commented on the last few meetings are the Stimple Parking Lot and the Robert Parker Coffin Path. The Stimple Parking Lot, the majority of that is complete. Now, the one thing that I have brought up to, I think, in a couple different email strings, but wanted to bring it forward to everybody is the parking lot, the striping arrows for the directional traffic. Two things, one, they are going to remain a temporary paint for the winter, but they will be installed, so people will see them until they get worn away. And then the other thing, south west of cigars and more, there was an error with the arrows out there, and that will be a two-way access. We're still working with the contractor to get that rectified. I checked in with our field guy this afternoon, and to my knowledge, that hasn't been done yet, but we certainly want to get that done before the snow flies. Certainly in the temporary paint condition, so people know that that's two-way.
It wasn't because I drove by this evening before the board meeting. Yeah, it has not. Yeah.
It has not. Okay, thank you. Okay. So we still got that, and then we're, as far as the two-way access on Old McHenry Road, the county has given their conceptual okay for that. They have a couple permit review comments that we're working through on that so that we can get that that work done, so that can be formally and officially a two-way access as soon as possible as well. Let's see here, the Robert Parker Coffin Road path, that is also substantially complete. The pedestrian crossing signals, if you will, they are installed. We need to get IDAT's attention and get them out there so that we can actually officially turn them on, so people can use those. So that has not yet been scheduled kind of a short week this week. Hopefully that happens next week.
What about the crosswalk? Will there be a crosswalk installed too and striped?
I was, I was informed that they put down the paint crosswalk today, so.
I missed it. I went right by there. I didn't even see it. That's not good.
Okay, I'll double check that bill. Obviously, if they said that it was done and then you didn't see it, I'm gonna double check.
Paying attention. That's not good, by the way.
Busy intersection, that's for sure. So a couple other things that I just want to touch on. The village's Lake Michigan water, there's been, there was discussion about that a couple weeks ago for parents' landing and manager Jackson and myself, we're going to get together next week to put more of that together and on paper as far as finances, running the current village water treatment plant, so that helpful, meaningful, and otherwise impactful discussion be happen, can be had at the village's strategic workshop on the fourth.
So that's actually not about her and his landing, that's.
Right, but yeah, I, that's with, well, yeah, it's, I want to get with, like, get everything squared away with Aaron's Landing as well, because there's also the, the component that the county is currently using their allocation for Aaron's Landing, so. Sorry, Kent, I just kind of rolled water into one, one category, but there's many, many nuances and fingers to that.
Right, so with Aaron's Landing, the question is, whose allocation is the water usage being charged against? So that's an open question. Sounds like there'll be some discussion about that and some resolution.
There's, there's some communication that's going to happen before that with Lake County, so we can bring back to the board their position.
And just to clarify, the agreement, the intergovernmental agreement we have with the county expressly addresses that, so that was three or four directorships ago at the Public Works Department, and it may be something that just didn't get carried over during one of the handoffs, so.
It sounds like, yes, there was an agreement to charge the water against our allocation, but the meters were never installed to allow that to happen.
No, it's actually just a matter of how it is reported to IDNR. They know how much water is going into Aaron's Landing, but, and at one point, the IDNR LMO reports for Aaron's Landing were under the, in the name of the village, prepared by the county. My presumption is that somewhere along the way, somebody not knowing what the intergovernmental agreement said, simply changed the name of the, the water allocation from Village of Long Grove to Lake County, and we just need to get that ironed out.
Okay, so as long as we know how much water is going into Aaron's Landing, we also know how much is being billed in total, so then we can calculate how much is lost, which should be almost nothing, since it's a new system. And that's something needs to be reported.
And actually, that's what is reported every year in that LMO. It just happens no longer apparently to be in the village's name versus the county's name.
Oh, okay, okay. Sounds good. So that's the hearing's landing part, and then the other part is basically an economic study and other factors too, to see if it makes sense to run Lake Michigan Water downtown.
We're, we are going to present the, we're going to present for discussion, a cost benefit analysis as relates to, and keeping in mind the scatter concern that you had to trustee Tanucci, but yeah, we're going to do a cost benefit analysis, analysis to present to the board as to the viability, the feasibility, I'm sorry, the viability of of going to Lake Michigan Water.
Right, okay.
Question related, but not exactly. So that will be prepared for the strategic discussion meeting. Will we have that in advance?
We will, we should, we should have our data by Tuesday. So it'll be.
And when would we have it?
Tuesday.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Question, if I may.
Please, Chris.
Is the scope that is just referred to of connecting to Lake Michigan Water a comprehensive scope for the village or just for downtown?
To the best of my knowledge, based off of what I saw in the previous submission of a grant, was that it was just for downtown.
A grant to whom?
Deco.
Which is.
Isn't that the repeat, isn't that the?
Yeah, last, last year, June, we, the village submitted a rebuild Illinois Public Infrastructure Grant to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. And Chris, that was for the extension and connection for the downtown only.
Why use that?
I don't think we have a plan for the rest of the village, do we?
Well, actually, you got to go back to a number of years ago where a vote was taken, where it would cost, I think, the average homeowner six to $7,000 a year for 30 years in order to bring water to their homes throughout the whole village. So that was the, the plan of record that probably should be pulled out as part of this discussion too. Now, obviously, some, you know, hair and has water, I have water where I am. So, you know, we're, there's differences throughout the, you know, the community.
I would be remiss if I didn't bring up too that when we were talking about different funding mechanisms to do this, ARPA funds came into play, this Deco grant came into play because the Deco grant was already in the works prior to me coming on board. That all we're doing is presenting the cost benefit analysis to the board. We're not assuming that there's going to be anything happening in regards to Lake Michigan Water. That's going to be a decision of the body. We're just putting the analysis together.
Right, this is data that's being prevented to aid us in making the decision.
Correct.
I have a question on another topic when we can move on.
Yeah, absolutely. Are we, is it on the engineers report or is it, because Jeff's still working his way through it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll wait.
Yep.
Yes, it's on, it's on the engineer report, but I'll wait.
Jeff, keep working your way through it.
Okay, yeah, there's, there's a number of other projects that we just keep tracking on the engineers report, no significant updates on those. I just wanted to highlight a couple things. One, still trying to get that light pole replaced in front of 238 RPC, the olive tap. Material shortages on that one, still, still waiting for that to, to come from, you know, where it was fabricated. So hopefully that gets done here in the next month. Another item, 16C, a new item on the engineers report. Back earlier this year, there was, and even going back to last year, there was discussion about traffic calming on Checker Road, both for the cut-throughs that happened in that, on that corridor, you know, using Schaefer and Checker, but also a safety thing because of the testimony and the comments and the feedback the village had received about cars passing buses on Checker Road. So earlier this year, when the budget was being discussed and approved, there's a line item in there for $25,000 for a choker on Checker Road. And we are moving that project forward, looking to have that installed in late winter, April 2022, before the fiscal year ends. So the, the process for that would be to get the, the design, the parameters and finalized, get pricing for that, and then bring it back to the board for the official go-no-go for, for construction. So I just put that in there as item 16C. So that hadn't been on the engineers report, so hopefully if you had explained, that kind of gives a background and why that's there. There's any questions, certainly, please ask.
Totally took me by surprise, Jeff. I thought, I, that totally took me by surprise. I thought we were approving, examining it, not moving forward with it. The best of my recollect, the best of my recollection is, we talked about variety of things, and I know this is something that some people, but we did, I, that really, that really took me by surprise. I did not think we were proceeding with that.
We are, we are proceeding with bringing to the board the option of the choker checker, the checker choker.
Checker choker.
Yeah, the checker choker.
And the choker, and the choker is the best option? Because that was the thing we went around and around on. Chris, you, you're making noises, but to me, I mean.
Yeah, why don't we let Chris talk too? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, Jennifer raised her hand too, if you noticed. Yeah, that was the one issue I had on the engineers report I wanted to talk about. I, I was completely shocked by that line item on the engineers report as well. I also think that lumpy get under miscellaneous, blocking off a major public, and maybe major is too big, a significant public road with a choker without any discussion, I think is a little preemptive. And certainly without a public hearing to talk about what that alternatives looks like or what they are, to let people input into this. Obviously, we're going to, we can help fix a problem at an intersection for, I don't know, 10, 15 houses, but I, I just can't imagine us choking Schaefer Road or Checker Road, excuse me, because so many people do use that road. I think not, not at all in favor of just the rough concept of, of closing or choking Checker Road.
Let me assure, let me assure the board that there was nothing moving forward that we were looking at putting together a package for the board review, for the board's review and discussion, not that we were moving forward, and if that's the impression, then it's.
It says right there, construction.
No, I understand. Oh, Chris, absolutely.
I don't know. Maybe I missed it. I don't know. It does right there.
Construction April 2022. Absolutely right. You're absolutely right. I, when I looked at the report this afternoon again, and I caught it, it, I could see it being interpreted that way without a doubt. My apologies on it. This was supposed to be, put a package together for the board to discuss and take a look at and have some discussion as if to, that's where they wanted to go. That's, that's absolutely totally what it was going to be. Nothing wasn't going to be, because we also had suggestions of speed humps and speed bumps as well as the choker on Checker. It was we're putting it together. I asked Jeff to get us the costs, so you guys had, so the board had accurate costs on it, so when they made that assessment, they would have those numbers in front of them, but nothing was going to proceed. There was no green light on anything until it went before the board.
Jenny, you had your hand raised?
No, I was just the same thing. I was just going to say the wording was a little misleading then. But yeah, Anne and Chris, I actually reached out to Rita and Anne saying, did I miss something? Because I don't remember. I remember talking about this, but I'm like, was I not at a meeting? So it was alarming.
So all I will tell you is, all I did was say to, to Greg was that we had money in the budget to do a a choker on Checker, and that we needed to look at that and to come up with options there. So that's what this is, so.
I'm going to respectfully say, I, we've talked, you've used the word choker bill, but I feel like we heard from some of the resident, I, I'm with Chris. I think we need a little more of local resident input.
Absolutely, but, but you got to get, you know, magnitude of what it, you know, what it, what it would cost and just a starting point somewhere, right? So I don't, I don't know. You can't just have a public hearing without having anything on the table, right?
So very much agree. I completely, I completely agree with that, but I also think.
And I didn't, I didn't word any of this, any of this way, and I've made it perfectly clear that the board has not approved this. I just asked to make sure we bring it forward. As the village president, I did that, so.
Yep, yep. I just hope that we, I don't know how to say this. We ended up like looking at the design of Stimple long after looking at all of the costs and where that was coming from. I just don't want to get in that kind of back against the wall conversation at the end on this one either, even though it's much smaller.
And, and, and just to add a sense of reassurance to the board, and I understand the language there, and I apologize for not catching that earlier and providing some clarification, but the, the, I cannot approve anything over $10,000, so it would absolutely have to come to the board for discussion and rest assured to the, I'm going to give the board the assurance that that's not something I would have done arbitrarily or on my own. So I'm not that nuts.
Rita, it looks like you're about to say something.
Oh, no, I'm listening. I, I agree with everybody else. Does it cost us money to get to pull together the, the cost, potential cost of two or three or four of these options we talked about? You know, like, is it an engineering study where we're spending thousands?
I, I don't think we're spending thousands on it. It's, is there, is there, the more data the board wants, obviously, there's going to be more expense with it, but if you're looking to say, let's explore multiple options and see what that brings us, and you want to get a cost that would be involved with that, trustee O'Connor, that's certainly something we could put together.
Yeah, well, it wouldn't, you know, thanks. I appreciate that, and it wouldn't be up to me. We had talked about speed bumps, we talked about choker, we talked about a speed table, and we really, we just discussed it. I don't, I don't know that we came to a an opinion or a conclusion on anything except that the situation down there is unsafe, so I would be interested in knowing what the residents of the area think about it, and approximate cost for each of those options or any, any other idea that somebody may have.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Perhaps, are there other options?
Let me, let me get with Jeff's, Jeff's on vacation this week, except for he's here. And then let me turn around and get with Jeff. We'll lay out, we'll put together options for the board, so the board can discuss and have a, have an all-encompassing data to make a decision.
If I might add, you may not have noticed, I mean, I mean, I was shocked to see a choker on the engineering report, but what you may not have noticed was that the, any study of bridge protection was removed without the dignity of discussing with me or with Scott Hoynes or answering and finding out what the result of, I forget, Wooten Engineering, what their response was, and, and, and I never heard from either Jeff or Greg what their response was. I've had it for two months because I asked them directly for it, but I never had any conversation with either one of you, and now suddenly it's off the report. So I mentioned that just for, for in passing.
I think that's a COVID oversight.
Yeah, right.
Jeff, why was it taken off the report? I don't have to put you in the hot seat. I actually don't know, so.
Well, I don't know either. I have no idea.
So, you know, manager Jackson and I, we have yet to discuss the two proposals that we had. We had, we do, Bobby got the proposal from Wooten Electric, and then we also got one.
On September 29th.
Correct, we got one from Wooten Electric, and then we got. Correct, correct. And then we got another one from, I think it was Utility Dynamics.
That was before, it was before Wooten. Oh, no, no, we went, we went to Wooten, and, and what's so embarrassing is that Scott Hoynes has been a dedicated provider of, of knowledge and, 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 and effort into Long Grove, and, and we have treated him very poorly.
So I, yeah, Greg and I need to carve out some time to go painstakingly through those two proposals. I didn't, you know, intentionally take that off. I apologize for that.
You got caught, babe.
No, I, I know that that's still an active project.
Well, no, really, but well, it, it, it's. Yeah.
Keep going, Jeff. Thank you.
So, um, the other, the other item that's on, that I would touch on is just the, the berm over at the Grove. We have not yet verified the accuracy of their ASBILT survey. I think I mentioned last board meeting that they were going to submit the ASBILT survey, and we were going to double check that to make sure that that was correct. The village forester did go out to the berm and found a few deficiencies, actually quite a few deficiencies with the landscaping that was installed over there, so I, I think that would warrant some, some further discussion. I don't know if the, the context of the engineers report is the appropriate forum for that.
I would like, let me interject in that. Jeff, we haven't had a chance to talk yet today, but I communicated with Vic, the position of where the Grove is at. This is based off of a meeting ago, I believe. I had mentioned to the board that myself and Jeff were going to go out and speak to the Jimmy Trumble out there with the, who's supposed to be taking care of the berm. Jeff and I got out there, they were doing work. We had some concerns about the height of the berm. We had some concerns about the planting material. It was at that point, we had asked the arborist to go out and take a look to make sure that the planting material matched the landscaping plan that was presented. And then we also had issues with the ASBILT. You go pretty much, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, Jimmy Trumble basically told us that this was it. This was the work they were putting in there, and they were going to, they were going to that, that's all he was going to do. And that's what we, that's where we ended up. We ended up with Jimmy Trumble saying, this is what we were going to do. He said that the people out there had the landscaping plan, but we found that the landscaping plan didn't match actually what would needed to be done. That being the case, what I would ask the board to, to do if they're so inclined is to see if they are satisfied that the work there is adequate. We know we have a bond that we're holding. This, I had a difficult time determining how tall that berm was because this work all happened prior to me arriving. But I guess I would, I, we're in a difficult position in, in the sense of do we accept this work? Do we secure it? Do we take the bond back and then complete the work on our own? Vic, you may be able to speak to some of those options a little better than I'm being able to articulate, but we need some direction from the board on what our next step is going to be. It certainly is not complete to what we were promised it would be completed. Am I wrong, Jeff?
No, you're right on, Greg.
Vic?
Well, we have several options. One is we can simply go pull the bond. There's not a lot, you know, we have to detail what the deficiencies are in doing so, but that's just a matter of logging that information down. I did receive an email from their attorney, I want to say, the day after our last board meeting, and he, he was doing a victory lap. We finished. I sent that along to Jeff and to Greg, and Jeff made it clear that, yeah, they're at the wrong finish line, and and, uh, they're going to need to, uh, still do more. At that point, the forester had not yet been out, and Jeff was still awaiting the topo, but, uh, it, it seemed if I, I don't want to misstate what, what I understood from Jeff, but it seemed that, uh, it was obvious that there were some shortcomings, and I think that that's been borne out. So we, you know, the other thing that we have is obviously the weather, and not quite sure from a practical perspective, what can be done, uh, before, uh, the, the winter shuts everything down. Uh, but certainly we can pull the bond before then and have everything lined up for the spring if we're unable to do it now.
Do you mind if I just share a quick picture of just what it looks like right now too? Cause I went out there today and did that. Do you mind? That'd be helpful. If I could just, um, this is what it looks like. So it's, um, may not be exactly the spec, but, um, it looks a lot better. So that's where I think everyone should take a look at it, and then we'll get the details from Greg and Jeff on what the shortcomings are, right? But that's what it looks like. That helps.
Can I ask, what, you know, I, I, I see the positivity of trees. Are, are, when you say number of deficiencies, are you referring mostly to the lack of landscaping, or are you referring to the amount of dirt that's still there?
I'll defer to, I'll defer to both. That's correct. And I'll defer to Jeff on the elevation and, and the amount of dirt that's there, but we have a number of things from the arborist, uh, regarding some of the planting, uh, that, um, could be corrected in my, in, just in my view, could be corrected in the spring if, if the board wanted to go that way. Jeff, you want to talk about the elevations in the berm?
Yeah. Well, the elevations, like I mentioned, we're still, um, looking to get those, uh, verified. They provided an as-built survey that said that they've met all of the, uh, approved line and grades for the berm. Uh, this is now the third as-built survey that they submitted that said that. Uh, the previous two, uh, they had significant earthwork yet to be done and material to be exported from the site. And to Jenny's comment a couple of board meetings ago, um, you know, after there was, uh, the, uh, the directive that we had given them that, hey, you need to remove some material specifically at the northeast corner of the berm, and then all of a sudden we get the, we're at the finish line comment, and the, the timing didn't work out, uh, or didn't seem to make sense as far as when they actually, uh, removed that extra material.
I see. And have the, the neighbors behind the berm, have, have they called Billy Chau? Have they made any comments that, like, they're upset or?
Not, not, not during, not during my, my tenure, no. I don't, I can't speak to what happened before that.
Okay, thank you.
Has anybody kept a log on what this has cost us?
We, we can track down the dollar amounts from an engineering perspective and a time and staff perspective, uh, perspective, yes.
Well, I assumed engineering, we weren't being charged.
Well, s- some of it goes to that, it goes to the escrow, but I thought you were assuming like staff time and.
No, I'm, I'm talking legal time and your time and, and, and the forester's time and, and, and.
Yeah, we, we. Yeah, we could, we could put those numbers together, absolutely.
And to clarify, since the settlement agreement was executed, they have been delivering monies into escrow to pay all of the review and inspection, uh, costs of the engineer, and I think there's probably about $6,000 still in that escrow. And I think, uh, I'm not quite sure, Jeff, how far that goes in terms of the billing cycles, but, uh, they have been, uh, reimbursing the village for all of those costs, uh, during that time.
But not yours?
No. Thankfully, I have one more to gadfly, not the, uh, the worker bee.
Well, so I think there was an ask, um, we're going to get the, you know, deficiencies documented, um, and the ask is take a look at it yourselves too. And, uh, you know, I guess provide feedback, uh, for the next board meeting. Everyone's okay with that? Jeff, let's keep moving.
Okay, well, that's, uh, that's what I had on the, uh, the engineer's report, uh, to highlight tonight. Um, again, my apologies for the, the poor choice of words and the, um, incident on a remover, remove all, excuse me, of the overheight detection. Uh, Greg, if, uh, if I can ask that we, uh, make a point to discuss that, uh, Monday when we meet, uh, so we can, uh, move that discussion forward. I think that would be, uh, a good, uh, strategy.
May I, uh, may I ask one more question more of Vic than, than, than engineering? And that is with the Eleanor, um, um, time being spent by Jeff for getting the, um, grant application and, and meetings with them and so forth. At what time, at what point are we tiptoeing around this being private property that we're doing village money? Village expenses?
As I understand, Lake Eleanor has, uh, and I, I may be misunderstanding, but Lake Eleanor has some uh, interrea- interreaction between the village-owned, uh, part of that and I, and the private part of it. There are two pipes under the road, if I remember, that are the villages. Jeff, help me out.
No, wrong development. Yeah. That's Three Lakes. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't need an answer now, but I would like an answer in the future as to at what point are we violating, um, private property, uh, village costs being spent on private property?
Right. I, I, I'll, uh, confer with Greg and Jeff to find out exactly what that arrangement is, and particularly if there are village, uh, drainage ways that are impacted by that.
And I'm, I'm not, I'm not, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, you're not writing a grant for that property. What you did was contact stormwater management to see if there was grant money available. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that was the first thing, and then this, the next thing was to put the grant application together, um, and I guess I understood from our last meeting that, uh, we were going to take the lead in getting that. Now there's a, a lot of that that Lake Eleanor Estates will have to do as well.
Right. Yeah, we're just steering the ship on that, but, uh, but.
It's still time. Time is money.
Absolutely, trustee. Absolutely.
Any other, um, questions for, uh, village engineer Perry?
I have two issues, uh, Mr. President, if I can. Uh, one of them's Old Hicks and Checker. The parking lot that the Lake, uh, Lake County Forest Preserve was working on, it's paved. It's going to be striped tomorrow. Uh, we're looking at about two weeks for that job to be complete. And then I was contacted by the Lake County Forest Preserve District to discuss the, uh, plant screening at Buffalo Creek, that, uh, was part of an intergovernmental agreement some time ago. Uh, they presented the, uh, screening plan and a time in action for them to begin the work. And I'll keep the board updated, uh, as to the progress on those projects.
All right. Any questions there?
No, thanks. That's good news. I'm sure everybody down there will appreciate it.
All right, um, moving, moving along then to the next item on the agenda, which is consideration of resolution authorizing a high deductible health insurance policy with Blue Cross Blue Shield, a dental insurance policy with Delta, Delta Dental, and a health reimbursement account for full-time village employees. Um, that's interesting because I think we all have a part-time on there, but I, I'm going to let, uh, village manager Jackson review.
This is, this is, uh, for the full-time employees as part of the, the benefit package. Uh, employees are entitled, uh, as part of our bang of benefit package entitled to healthcare insurance. Uh, the village has worked with, uh, Krug as the insurance company. Uh, we do not have a lot of, a, a, a large number of employees, uh, that take, uh, in, uh, healthcare coverage. In fact, we only have two. Uh, we are looking at an increase i- in this, uh, proposal of 9.95%, but compared to last year, and, and this happened when I first got on, there was a discussion of going from 9010 to 8020. Uh, it didn't happen last year. The board said to go ahead and continue 9010 through the end of the fiscal year. Um, this, this press or this, uh, uh, benefit will be 8020. And based on the 8020 split, there ends up being a little bit of savings to the village every year per person of $314. Uh, thank you to trustee Tanucci, who has a background in insurance, who asked, asked us to verify, um, employees that are Medicare eligible to see if we would be able to even reduce our costs further. Uh, we're firming that up right now. We have one of the employees who are, uh, participating in this insurance program that is Medicare eligible, so we believe that what is presented to you will even be less once we, uh, firm up the Medicare, uh, the Medicare portion for that other employee. So the boards, uh, the staff is recommending the renewal of the current Blue Cross Blue Shield plan with a 9.95% overall increase. The renewal of the HRA plan, uh, without any annual increase in a January 2022 employer employee contribution rate, uh, from 9010 to 8020. This is also a renewal that will renew, uh, for Delta Dental, which is totally absorbed by the employee. The plan that we're choosing to go with, uh, allows the employee to retain a continuity and coverage and physical, uh, physician access. And again, the rate change will result, uh, to a $314 per year saving per employee based on, uh, calendar year 2021 premiums.
Any discussion?
I just, I just have a couple of info type questions.
Please, please.
On the, the nine, 9.9 increase, 9, 9.9% increase, where does, where does that come from? What, what part of the plan?
It's the, oh, it's the overall price of the plan, and then, and then it's divided up between the employee and employee, employer contribution.
Well, yes, no, I, I, I understood that. I just meant where are the numbers different? And you're, you're saying it's just, um, the quoted price for the coverage?
That's correct.
And, uh, the HRA, do you know what? I didn't, I didn't, forgive me, I forgot. Actually, we're having a meeting tonight, so I didn't have a chance to look it up. On the HRA, what, what is the current HRA amount for full-time employees?
It is, um, the employee pays the first 1,400, employer reimburses the next 4,500, and then the employee pays the next 1,000.
Uh, okay. Okay, so I, I knew I remembered something like around 5,000 or 6,000, but I wasn't, I wasn't quite sure. So that, that, that part we bumped up a little bit.
No, it, it, it remains the exact same from last year.
Okay. And what's the benefit to the employees of a dental plan where they're, they're paying uh, everything, all of the premium? How does that work? How does that work out?
It gives them, I would tell you, I don't think there's a great dental plan anywhere, but there's, uh, but it, but it gives them the, uh, uh, ability to have some relief from coverage. My understanding is that the village, uh, the Delta Dental Plan that's come with the healthcare plans have always been an employee contrib-, uh, 100% employee contribution.
I see, I see. I, I, I understand.
Well, if somebody just had some expensive, expensive dental surgery, um, it does help to have the coverage, even if it isn't the best, so.
Right, right. I under- I understand. I got it. Thank you.
I think we've asked this in the past. Is there any way we could cooperatively work with other entities to, you know, to be able to have more scale?
Yeah, there, there, there is trustee, and, and Denise and I have been discussing it, the, the difficulty uh, with, with, uh, what we did with the insurance as well as the, uh, property casualty that we'll be coming back to the board with on the 14th is, um, it was the timing of the changeover in manager, uh, being able to get in here, develop an RFP, get the RFP out, be able to adequately look at it. Uh, we are firm in our resolve to make sure that we go out for a more competitive bid next year because it appears that this just keeps getting repeated and repeated and repeated. Myself and Denise had a conversation today with our property casualty insurance and just to further support the, telling him we were not satisfied with, um, how they quoted us in the property casualty, but we recognize that the time was not in our favor for this. The state of Illinois has a, uh, insurance program that local units of government can get involved with, and because of scale, to your point, the large numbers, that there may even be a less expensive, uh, and, and better insurance, uh, less expensive to the village, less expensive to the employee, and better coverage, uh, with a lesser deductible for the employees, which is one thing I want to look at next year. And then with property casualty, we want to start looking at potential groups where it's, where it's, uh, where it makes sense. So, yeah, we, we definitely, I was not, uh, I was not thrilled with what we got back on insurance, but it's nobody's fault. It was a, it was a problem with timing, but we need to do a better job of, of, of addressing that.
Thank you.
Again, thank you trustee Tanucci for, uh, your assistance. Uh, it, it was important during this, uh, as we were looking at this.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any other, um, questions? Yep, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate being recognized. I, I'm not an insurance guy, so my question is on, uh, the pharmaceutical and prescription coverage. How does that work out when I'm, when I'm reading like Report 5B 2022? It says non-preferred RX and preferred RX is 100%. I, I don't know what that means. That means we, the, the plan pays 100%. The employee pays 100%. What does that mean?
Where are you looking?
Um, on the report, the 5B document that was included, 05B.
05B. Oh, here we go.
Don't need to look at the report. I'm just asking how do we cover far, you know, the, the prescription coverage? What, what, what's the story?
I will have to dig into that, trustee.
That's a big part of this too, isn't it, or not? I mean, I just, I'm just trying to understand what, you know, what it is. So.
It says there's deductible, then 0%, right? So they don't pay anything.
Does that strike anybody as being odd or not?
Well, what's the deductible? You got the, um, what is the deductible?
So you're talking about pharmacy now?
Pharmacy, yeah.
Individual deduct, individual deductibles, $1,400.
Well, for the individual, yep. And then it's what, 4,000? I guess they're both individual, right? Yeah.
I mean, you could blow through that in two shots of emerald, right? So my point being, um, you know, to me, it strikes me as we have no distinction between preferred and non-preferred. And to me, I think, you know, I'd like to, you know, drive employees into preferred in generics versus the non-preferred, because like an emerald shot is, you know, $1,000 a pop kind of thing. Um, I know our program at work has a kind of delineation, is actually has four classifications, you know, generic, then preferred and non-preferred, and holy crap, don't ever buy this stuff kind of thing. And, uh, I see Jennifer's got her hand up. Jennifer, sorry to interrupt you. Um, uh, manager Jackson, you said the word when you were prefacing this thing, and I just wanted to maybe, uh, present a different emotion to that word. You said the word employees are entitled to healthcare benefits. I, I seem to think that we offer healthcare benefits, offer a comprehensive healthcare package, so. Don't want to get tied up in, in, in linguistics tonight more, but I don't know if entitled would be the word that I would agree with.
Yeah, I was using it as, in relation to the plan says that they are, they can receive healthcare benefits, so.
I, thank you.
Not that they're entitled to it by law or any other. Not that they're entitled to it by law or any other, any other.
Jenny, you were gonna say something?
No, it's fine. It's, I'm, it's, thank you.
What's our deadline? Bill, when do we need to approve this?
By the next meeting, because it's got to start at the first of the year, right? So.
Yes.
Got one more meeting if you want to kick the can. Um, so I mean, if I understand this correctly, what's the total annual cost, Greg?
Well, the total annual cost will be for two employees about twenty seven thousand dollars.
Twenty seven thousand dollars.
At, at, at the top end.
And that's, obviously that's down from last year because, uh, you're providing your own insurance. Uh, we don't have a village planner anymore too. And Denise has her own insurance, so we just have it for two people, which is part of the challenge.
And margarita too.
And margarita too, so. It's, it's, um, if the board wants to look at this further, we can move it to the next meeting or.
Who are, who are the two employees?
Natalie, Natalie and Sherry.
I thought Natalie was part-time.
No, full-time.
Oh. Ow.
I, I just, I, I appreciate the, um, the scrutiny and I do would very much appreciate looking for more competitive work next year. I personally, I, I'm fine proceeding right now without spending a whole lot of other energy. I don't know that we're going to have a whole lot of other choices in the next two, three weeks. I don't know. I respect all the questions. I just, for my own personal standpoint, I'm fine with proceeding on this.
I agree. I, I think the thing that puts us at a, I don't want to put our employees at a disadvantage, but what puts us at a disadvantage is we have two people. You know, if we had a hundred and two people, but we don't, so.
That's why I think for us to look in to trustee Chris Meyer's comment to, to look to be part of a of a larger group like the state of Illinois or another group where you can get some lesser expense and, and same or better benefits is the right way to go.
If you, if you go with those bigger programs though, don't you run the risk of somebody becoming uninsurable? If, if the, if the provider changes down the road?
I would think that's part of the evaluation.
Yeah, I, yeah, to see if somebody's going to get dropped off the insurance or not, that, that we'd have to look at that.
Yeah. No, I mean, sometimes when you go with, with association type, um, insurance plans or who knows if you can trust the state of Illinois, so. You know, we can move on, but I'm just, that's just hot air from my mouth.
Does anyone feel like confident enough to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I don't think we're going to find anything different in the next three weeks. We can do a detailed analysis for the next renewal a year from now, and we should. In the next three weeks, it's basically this, or go to the Obamacare marketplace, which I would not recommend for multiple reasons. So those are basically our two options in the next three weeks, this one and Obamacare.
If that's a motion, I'll second you Kent.
So.
It was a long-winded motion.
So Kent made a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a high deductible health insurance policy with Blue Cross Blue Shield, a dental insurance policy with Delta Dental and a health reimbursement account for full-time village employees. So it's moved by trustee Tanucci and seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. Um, village clerk Schmidtky, that is a roll call, please.
Trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Barowski.
No.
Trustee Micho.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Okay, um, the ayes have it, motion carried.
Does Chris still get an answer to his question? Preferred versus non-preferred?
Well, it's not just that, it's the cost, right? I mean, I don't know anybody who is getting a hundred percent of their prescriptions paid for, like nobody, even if you.
Well, that's, that's a hundred percent after deductible. The deductible needs to be met first.
But the deduct, deductible is only fourteen hundred bucks is what I was told. That's like nothing.
I know the deductible, the, the employee portion, hold on, let me open this up.
You, you don't have to, Kent, you don't have to. We can move on. Um, but you know, next year, uh, to, to manager Jackson's point, we need options earlier. And, you know, um, you know, even looking at the other alternatives, uh, as Kent mentioned, I think, you know, maybe, maybe there's something we can do differently, a stipend instead of healthcare, so we're not in the healthcare business. You know, I mean, something, I don't know. Maybe there's, there's alternatives, but we really need to look at them, because this is to the point earlier, back against the wall again, right? Here we are, right? Have to pass it. And I don't want to be in that position again next fall.
All right, thank you for the feedback, Chris. I'm going to keep us moving. Uh, we now are into the village president and trustee reports. I know Amy commented on it, commented on it earlier. I just want to, um, say that the holiday lighting ceremony, I think it turned out nice last Friday. I want to thank the Long Grove Confectionery, the Historic Society, the Downtown Business Association. I'm sure there's many others that helped put that together. From communications, uh, you know, Bobby and team, uh, to Greg Jackson, but, uh, you know, they, they made it all possible, and I thought it was a nice event, so glad I was able to attend.
It was very nice. It was very hometown, small town. I didn't know what to expect and, um, and I, you know, I walked away thinking this was just a really nice community get-together, and, and I think it, it, it helps with community building. I wish some of the merchants, or if not all of them, would have at least had later hours that evening to give the people who had gathered a reason to spend more time in the downtown. You know, even if we had brought in, uh, you know how they have those like the Kris Krindl marks, Kris Krindl markets where they sell all kinds of things that aren't good for you. Hot food and hot drinks and things like that, like. And maybe that was more than they wanted to do, but it, it just would have been, I thought I was surprised a lot of the merchants weren't open, so.
I know many of them are really challenged on staff. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to tell you, all the restaurants filled up afterwards, so just so you know.
That's good.
So, because, you know, I saw, you know, Village Tavern, um, I know that we ate at Joni's, it was packed, right? And I heard people talking about the ceremony, so. So it was good to see. So it actually brought people to downtown for dinner, so.
Yeah, well, that's great. That's nice. It, it was, it was a nice event.
The brewery didn't do so good, though. We went there afterwards and they didn't really get a whole lot of customers, but people were eating though, which was good.
That's because they filled up on donuts or didn't fill up on.
There you go. All right, so I'll turn it over. That's all my report. I don't really have anything, but trustee Broowski, do you have a report tonight?
Oh, sir.
Trustee Kritzmeyer, I know you have the.
We have the treasures report, which, um, we're, I'm, we're now in a, of, a rhythm where I get an early look, so I posed some questions and Greg and Denise have been super responsive and we had another conversation today, so. I'll say on the treasures report, there's some good things, but, um, I'll let, I'll let Greg and Denise lead when we get to that part of the agenda. Other than that, um, nothing else really.
All right, thank you. Trustee O'Connor?
No, Jeff took all my thunder.
All right, Jeff. Uh, trustee O'Reilly?
Uh, just the report that that Greg had, had put together on, on, on the, uh, use of, of social media. And I, I think what it shows is that the more money we put in, the more responses we're getting, or the more activity. Um, I don't know what that activity converts to. But, but it, it's more activity.
Yep, thank you for that. No, I saw that. You know, it's interesting, because I, I think of, um, like, just even looking at the website, you know, I go there a lot myself personally, because it's the easiest place to grab stuff. So I wonder how much of us are using the website versus, um, our residents, but, um, you know, because it's not, it's not a ton of hits on the website, right? So. But it's good to see that there, there's activity, so.
It's all right. Um, Bobby, it, it, it feels like, uh, the economic development, we've had conversations, or there have been conversations, I've missed the last few, on LinkedIn. Where exactly do we stand on LinkedIn? Is that a wish, a hope, a plan, or a knot on the table?
You know, we've tried to kind of get Melanie to define what she wants to do with it, or, or what we should do with it, and, and I don't think we've accomplished a, a, a direction. It's, it's.
Okay.
It's not focused towards that and, and, and to define what they want out of it versus what the village, what the village proper may want. Um, that discussion has not taken place.
Okay. Thank you. That clarifies. It says that it's as mu, it's as fuzzy as I thought it is in my head then. It's as fuzzy as it is in my head. Thank you.
Trustee O'Reilly, anything else?
No.
Thank you for that report. Trustee Micho? You might have to go off mute.
Um, no reports.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Tanucci, you may have given your report earlier. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, the, the Lake Michigan water cost benefit analysis. Um, I just have a question for Ann. Uh, Ann, did you want to talk about the downtown S S A in this meeting? The email you sent.
Oh. Oh, good point. Um, so the downtown, we we have to approve all of the tax rolls for the S S As by the end of the year, so that can go to Lake County Clerk for collecting. The H D L G B A for downtown, recall, we have, there's an S S A that the downtown firms have voted on themselves, and we've contracted with the H D L G B A to provide the services that S S A is supposed to fund, to promote economic development and tourism. Bobby and others worked on that contract where they are to deliver both financial information, well, financial information, the tax roll information, meaning which properties are apportioned, which amount of the hundred and sixty five thousand, um, or the dollars, and then their program. What are their, what's their plan for the next year? What is the budget that relates to that, and what are the results? They asked us if we could, uh, narrow the scope of their audit, which was part of that audited financials to only the hundred and sixty five thousand, that is the S S A. And we agreed on that because they're kind of, they were pinched from COVID. It's also very understandable that in twenty twenty, there wouldn't be a whole lot of program results. But I'm, my patience is quite thin on all of this right now, that we don't have anything going forward for next year. We have no plan, we have no budget. We have no, uh, results, uh, of anything from twenty twenty one. We have nothing that links into, well, this plan and this budget are hoping to lead to those results. Like visitors to the visitor center, um, hits to their website, all of the same information Denise provided for our website. And importantly, we don't have a tax rule, and if, if that doesn't show up, we can't, in fact, send something to the Lake County Clerk and there will be no taxes there. My patience is quite thin with this.
When you mentioned tax rolls, if you'll recall last year, they got I want to say a hundred and fifty nine versus a hundred and sixty five because of the teardown of Red Oaks. And that, that messed up the square footage. Has that, has that those measurements been changed to accommodate the loss of that square footage?
That's on the H D L G B A. Oh, thanks.
If I can jump in on that, um, your, your recollection is correct, Bobby, that originally the S S A tax roll was based on square footage of buildings. When we received the proposed tax roll from might have been the L G B C P at the time, but whatever the acronym was at that time, they had, without the village's knowledge or consent, changed the way they went about it and did it in terms of square footage of the lot.
I thought it was the square footage of the first floor.
Of the first floor building is what the S S A originally said. They delivered to us a a tax roll that was, and they had changed the methodology. So I believe it was two years ago, the village board amended the S S A to conform with the methodology that the downtown merchants had agreed to. And so I believe that that reduction that you see may be simply a lack of, uh, of.
No, it was because of, it was because of the, of the, of the teardown that, that we lost, that they lost the square footage of that building, and it was either too late or forgotten to apply it.
It, it's not ours to apply, though. It, it, they, the tax roll that they provide.
So the tax roll was, was missing that square footage. And that's how they ended up. So, so that was not part of the, the math. And that's how they got six thousand, seven thousand dollars less than they should have.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a family emergency. I have to go right now. I'm.
Sorry, sorry, Jenny. Bye. Good luck.
Just, just to clarify, the, the levy that the village passed for twenty twenty was for the one sixty five, one oh five ninety one. That was what they asked for. The, the audit indicates they've gotten something less that would not be based on the square footage, that would simply be based on some of the taxes not having been paid.
Well, I, I would, I would ask that we look into it. I, I, I may be wrong, but, but I, I don't think so, um, that, that it had to do with that building. And, and so I, I may have construed this inaccurately, but that was, that's my recollection of, of why it happened.
Well, that's how we actually found out that they gave us the wrong formulation, and that's why the, the village board ultimately changed the special service area. But the, the difference between what is reflected in their audit in terms of dollars received through the S S A and what we levied would be for lack of payments. Because the county doesn't care how we got the numbers, they just get the numbers and apply it. So that would have.
Well, I guess all I want is, I want to make certain that they get what they're entitled to, and, and.
Here's the thing, Bobby, and, and this is, I'm out of patience on, they're not entitled to it. There's a contract to promote things and to deliver a, a number of items of information. They've delivered the audit, the narrowed audit as requested, but we haven't received anything else.
Well, it's kind of like having children.
But it's been four years in a row, and I mean, I could not have.
I, I, I've been on board for this since, since the beginning and, and thought at least we accomplished this audit, which is better than we've done in the past, but you're right. Um, but, but maybe they need a reminder that they got less than they had anticipated last year because of something.
I, I guess I'm, I'm being even stronger than that. I am unwilling to, I am unwilling to support any more contract with that group if they cannot provide the things that they agreed to. I am, I am, I'm just, I'm out of time, I'm out of patience on that, and I, we could not have been more specific. September first was when the emails went out with, with very detailed approval.
So village manager Jackson, you're, um, addressing this, right? Because at the next meeting, the tax levy has to go into place, right? So.
I sent communication to, uh, Ryan today, knowing that he's the treasurer for, for the organization. He responded by sending the audit, uh, the simplified audit, uh, that trustee Kritzmeyer put out. I also, uh, told him that I needed the, uh, the levy numbers, uh, to your point, President Jacob, the levy numbers, uh, because it had to go before the board, the deadline was the last, the next board meeting. I have not heard a response back to that as yet.
Yeah, if we don't get it in, they don't get their money, because it has to. Yeah, if we don't get it in, they don't get their money because it has to go in.
Has has anyone specifically laid out what Ann's point is?
Yes.
Very specifically what 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 we, what we agreed to?
Yes. Yes, I I had with Ryan and specifically said about um, a capturing of the programs, how the money was spent, uh, reiterating what the board, uh, what the board had said to, uh, the, uh, at the board meeting in September or the end of August, uh, to the HDL GBA, um, reiterated it, and in fact, I talked to him on Friday uh, at the lighting, again, about submitting for the SSA and the reporting that had to be in.
So the specifics are in the agreement between the village and the association. This was from 2019. This is one of the documents that Ann sent out earlier. And, um, section two D, like David, says, as a condition of receiving the funding for any year during the term of this agreement, the business association shall, and then it goes through the whole list of things they need to submit, which they've only submitted one of. Is that right, Ann? Just one of those things that are in that list? And it sounds like they haven't seen things for years.
Unless unless somebody on staff has received anything different, or Bobby's received anything different, I've only seen the narrow dog audit.
And that's from from my standpoint, and I can't speak for, uh, uh, my predecessors or or, you know, and I don't think Denise was involved with any of that, but this is the first document I've seen. The one I, the one I distributed today.
Yes, good news is, we got something. Bad news is, we still are getting most of nothing.
Yeah, and we're not getting what they agreed to provide.
Yeah, so I mean, there's no action for us, so, but I I just we have a responsibility that that tax is levied, we have a responsibility to make sure that that money is used to promote economic development and tourism. And I totally believe that's their intent, but they're providing no evidence, and they've agreed to, and we've asked.
All right, so, um, I guess Greg, you own following up on this, right? And drag whomever you need, including myself into it.
No, yeah, it's it's just going to be a constant, constant follow-up, which I will make sure we do, because that's the only piece we need to uh, complete our levy requirement for the for the next board meeting, so. I'll stay, I'll stay on it.
All right. Any, any, any other reports? Um, if not, I I would like to move us to the review of the October 2021 treasurer's report. I know there's some great news in there about the reserve, so I will be quiet and let somebody deliver that great news.
Right, 100%?
100, 100.4% if you move the decimal over, but who was doing that?
Yeah, so, yeah. Good, we don't know who was, the mystery doesn't but yeah, yeah, good news with that. There were some questions brought up, uh, trustee Kritzmeyer, uh, had mentioned just a short while ago, uh, motor fuel tax dollars, when we started looking at it, and and let me preface this by saying that we spent a good three hours on the budget today, uh, trying to move the budget cycle a little bit quicker, so that the board has more time to review it and scrutinize it as 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 certainly is appropriate. But one of the things we looked at were motor fuel tax dollars to find out that we initially were concerned that we were not getting all our dollars, or perhaps we were, um, we over projected in the, uh, with the budget, and it turns out that they're being calculated in a different line, which uh, I found out just shortly before the meeting, uh, so we look like we're on track with our projected dollars for motor fuel tax. A question was raised to the increased expense above budget regarding legal services. Um, part of that explanation goes to, um, a lot of money went to FOIA. A significant amount of money went to working on FOIA, and, um, there was a transition between uh, Bill being in his position, relying more on uh, legal assistance, and then the transition from myself coming on board, but I know Vic regrets to say that we used to talk often, now we don't talk so much. So, so, uh, you know, we're going to see some of that trail off as well. We are still, uh, seeing issues with, uh, water and the deficit with water to, uh, money coming in, but that'll also be part of our cost benefit analysis uh, that we look at. It's an area that trustee Tanucci had some concerns about, as well as did trustee Kritzmeyer. Um, and I think that's about it on the question side.
Can I throw a curveball at you, though, really quick? And maybe Ann or Denise know this better. But, um, the local use tax line item is the one where we were trying to capture the internet, you know, where landed sales tax, I guess, right? And we're trailing behind. Do we, do we know why that is?
And and if, I'll take a shot at this. It we're trailing behind, I think, because the projection that was made, there was a guesstimate. It was, uh, you know, the the line had never been separated out of the sales tax line before. So it was kind of an assessment of, okay, where do we need to be here? If if I'm wrong, Denise or trustee Kritzmeyer, uh, jump in.
We were, we we had received, so we used to budget for it all lumped together. We would receive two different threads of revenue. Um, part of the way that 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 revenue changed at the beginning of 2020 because of what they call the Wayfair case of receiving more sales tax when it's where it's delivered. Another rule changed at the beginning of 2021, and when we were setting this budget, we looked and said, we want to divide this out, keep an eye on it. We don't know where that's going to land. I think it was a guesstimate, uh, you know, in terms of like, what did we see last year? Last, 2020 was higher than 2019 because of the Wayfair case. We didn't know what to expect for 2021. What we're learning is, and and this came out at at an IML conference session I attended, in Illinois has an old antiquated sales tax collection. There there are agreements across all the states to be able to collect sales tax where, when it's delivered if a place does not have a place of business in the state. Um, every other state, not every other, most states collect sales tax at the destination, meaning if Long Grove has a lot of online deliveries, we should be collecting a lot of sales tax, but the state of Illinois has more of a a source. So if I receive something from Uline that got shipped out of Lake Forest, Lake Forest gets the sales tax. If I receive something from Uline that shipped from Wisconsin, then we might have a chance at it. I don't, maybe that's a little long-winded on there, Bill, but we're still trying to figure that out, and part of it is as more warehouses come inside the borders, we're probably not going to get much more.
Interesting, interesting. Okay, that's one to keep an eye on, right?
Hmm.
We, and we want it, that that was part of the reason, is we knew the rules were changing, and that's why we did break it out, so we could track it separately. It it's been coming in in the past, in the past, it was all lumped together in the budget.
And and we're still estimating the sales tax because it's a little bit behind, right, as well, in these numbers that we see in the treasurer's report, is this actual?
We always get the sales tax back from the state in two, in, you know, two months in arrears, and so that's why, you know, we end up with these big lumpy things in April when we figure that out in June.
Okay. Yeah, so it's still kind of an estimate right now, right?
Well, it's two months behind, so instead of six months, it's four months. Greg and Greg and Denise have been doing deep dives in there. The sales tax is a little behind, you know, but income tax is a little ahead. A fair amount ahead.
Yep.
I saw that, yeah. All right, I have no other questions. Sorry to dominate there. Thank you. Any other questions, or I guess we need a motion to accept the monthly treasurer's report, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it's moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Connor. Roll call, please. Michelle.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Thank you. Um, we have the approval of the board meeting minutes from the November 9th meeting. Does anyone have any uh, comments or recommended changes? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I do want to make a note that I made a minor change that was pointed out to me. I left off trustee on trustee Tanucci and item number seven. So I added back trustee, just so everyone knows.
Thank you. So was it Rita that was going to make the?
Yeah, someone.
As amended, right? Motioned as amended, and then seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
I abstained. I was not in attendance.
Uh, trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Really, the next item in the agenda is to adjourn. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Are we gonna, are we gonna vote on paying the bills?
No, we did that, we should have done that last meeting, right?
We did.
Okay, I'm I'm sorry.
No, but it was in the packet up there, too.
Well, that's, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I saw it as well. I got, for a second, I thought the same
Okay, let me, let me ask the question then that I had then. What's what's the solar invoice? There's a, I think it's a $3,000.
Yeah, you know, I have it printed out, so let me just see, because I I did the same thing, and I'm like, oh, wait a minute, we did that. I looked at it, we did that last time. I don't see that.
Fresh Coast Solar, 3,000?
That's it, yes.
Is that a, is that a, that that may be a return of somebody's deposit?
Can we ask? Yeah.
Yeah.
What was the pay, who's the payee on that?
Fresh Coast Solar.
Solar.
Yeah.
It's a bond refund.
Okay.
That's right. It looks like a bond refund amount.
Okay.
Yeah, it is. I'm looking at the bill detail. It does say bond refund.
Okay.
All right, so, um, who, did somebody make a move to adjourn the meeting?
Someone.
Moved by trustee O'Connor, seconded by I can't, okay, trustee Kritzmeyer, roll call, please. Everyone wants to stay here. They don't want to leave.
Serving such a good time.
Trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Tanucci.
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you.